Good evening, everyone, and thank you for watching. Time to move. Let's start with just a thank you to the Department of Public Works and this department for dealing with all of the weather and everything that we've all had to deal with this past week. And again, this morning, the sun's out now. And just to friends and neighbors, so there's so many people reporting on just the support that they receive from friends and neighbors worldwide. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokowiac?
Present.
Council President McCartney.
So, the first thing on our conference agenda is talking about friends and neighbors. We have a father-in-law back here who just celebrated his 100th birthday.
Really? Hi. Lyle Lorderback, 5 Harvard Terrace. Forty-five years ago, I met the love of my life, Gail Guadano, and I didn't know at the time I would get the father I didn't have. And I'd like to introduce my father-in-law, Albert Guadano, who last week celebrated his 100th birthday. Madam President, with your permission, council colleagues, Lorderbacks, Mr. Guadano. First of all, last week I made a mistake when I was talking about you and everything else, and I mentioned your granddaughter Lori as your daughter, and your brother as your granddaughter. So, I apologize for that. As Lyle said, and of course, I've known your daughter and your son-in-law for many years, particularly through Mountain Top and all the ups and downs of Mountain Tops, and we've become very, very close friends. And also, I've gotten to know you, sir, at many events, especially at Memorial Day and Labor Day, and you know, your commitment, and we thank you for your service to our country. So, and also, on behalf of the Township Council and the Township of West Orange, I'd like to read the resolution, the Township Commendation presented to you on this momentous occasion of 100 young years. Whereas the West Orange Township Council wishes to join the Guadano family in honoring the life of Albert Guadano, and whereas Albert was born on February 27, 28... No, 19. Say here, I was gonna say, you know, sorry. Well, no, it says 20, no problem. Okay. To Anthony and Mary Peruso Guadano, the family lived on Joyce Street in West Orange for a time, as well as Orange, New Jersey. He is one of 13 children, and whereas on October 20th, 1940, Albert married his love, the love of his life, Catherine Rinaldi. He and Catherine were married for 70 years prior to her passing. The couple moved to Carney, New Jersey, but eventually moved back to West Orange in 1964. The couple was blessed with two children, a daughter, Gail, and her husband, Lyle Lorderback, and a son, Albert Jr., and his wife, Maria. He is the proud and devoted grandparent of nine grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. And whereas Albert has enjoyed a rich and active life, he served the United States Army in WWII in the China Burma Indian Theater from 1944 to 1946, and is currently active in VFW Post 376. And whereas Albert worked for the Commonwealth Water Company for 32 years in various positions, eventually retiring in 1980 as an inventory clerk. After retirement, Albert resided in Toms River for 20 years, but eventually found his way back to West Orange, always come back to your roots, his hometown. He's currently a resident at Degnan House in West Orange, New Jersey. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Township Council, the Township of West Orange, is proud to wish Mr. Guadano a happiest 100th birthday, and we wish you, sir, many, many, many more. Thank you.
Oh, I just talked pretty loud. I'd really like to thank the Mayor, Prisim, and the council. We wish you many, many years of happiness, good health, help us your occasion.
Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Madam President. This is 2018, 1918.
What? Does it really? Good seeing you guys.
It's okay, we can fix it.
Yes.
Lyle, we'll have a new one made with you by protocol. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah. Day old.
Jeff, next on our agenda is an update for Rebound.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, they're just about 80 percent, not even say. John Gross and I were down there, went through the building, apartments look really nice. They got people down there, at any time you want to go in, they'll pick you around the building, bring you around.
Can I ask why it's on Rebound?
Sure. We are down at, we were down at the site, and John Gross and I went into the building, walked around the building with one of the people who is there showing people apartments. And they're pretty much almost ready to rock and roll. Everything looks pretty nice, actually.
We have a resolution, I know, I've heard a fellow consultant engineer about, he's got that checklist, he's checked them off that they have completed.
Yep. So, it's moving, moving very well.
I'm not just going to do it.
Yeah, I mean, actually, you don't even need to do that anymore. You can if you want to, but there's people on site every day, and all you need to do is walk in and they'll take you around the building.
Where do you park?
John Gross and I parked on the street. I mean, I'm not so, I don't, you could probably park in a parking lot, because the parking lot is open now.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
You'll probably have to make an appointment, though, I think, because they have a lot of, apparently have a lot of people that show them the units to.
Is lot open to the public, or just...
I don't think it is right now.
Just if you're going there to look at the units?
Right, right.
Okay.
Can you, what will be, Council President, any status on the retail section, like any potential...
I actually put a call out to, what the heck's his name, Steve Terrell today, and unfortunately, he didn't call me back, because that was one question I wanted to ask him, you know, where they were with the commercial, and if they had any tenants, but unfortunately, he didn't get back to me today.
I did see an article, I just pulled it up, where they're advertising in the West Orange Chronicle, the, an open house for anyone interested in leasing both units and also retail.
Oh, yeah. They have a person on site. You can go there anytime, what did they say, between 9:00 and 5:00? And just walk in the door, and there's a person there that will take you through the building, or take you to an apartment, a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, whatever you're looking to look at. But they are, they have been advertising for the commercial properties, but unfortunately, I didn't talk to anyone about it. I tried to get in touch with them today, and he didn't return my call.
How's the grand finale financial package moving?
I've talked to our attorneys after our last council meeting, and they were reaching out to the attorneys for Prism, and I haven't heard back from them yet, but I will give them a call and find out exactly where that's at, but I know our attorneys have been discussing things back and forth with them over the last couple of weeks. I'm just not so sure where it's at right now, but we're, we're moving on that also.
Is either DGP or Prism requesting any changes to the...
As far as I know, I haven't gotten any of that from our attorneys, but I will speak to them again tomorrow. I did speak to them, I guess it was on Thursday or Friday, and they said there were just some things that they were looking to work out with the attorney, and the attorneys were trying to work out with, with Prism. So, when I hear, when I get that back, I'll let you know.
Please do.
Sure. Definitely.
Do you have a comments question?
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You wanna wait, or...
I'm sorry. We have some floaters still coming in. So, as you should be aware, it's Restaurant Week this week, from March 11th to the 17th. We ended up with 23 restaurants all over town that were agreed to participate in Restaurant Week. We were able to secure lots and lots of advertising this year through our work with Allen Consulting. We have a huge spread in Tap online, and just since, like, Sunday, there's been a ton of impressions on their website. Every time they talk about Restaurant Week, there's, you know, I guess, does what it does on the internet. In addition to that, we were able to secure free advertising in the Chronicle, which they put in an ad, it's a little hard to see, because it's newspaper print, but they did give us a whole page in there that lists all of the restaurants, and if you haven't seen it, all the restaurants and what the special offer is. In addition to that, we have time online and in print in Suburban Essex Magazine, and there's 25 spots in each of the two radio stations, WMTR, which I think Billy Keough still listens to these days, and, and WDH, that's what I listen to. Little spotty up and down the hill, there's one dead spot over by Rick's office, but other than that, you can really hear it. So, there's 25 canned messages and DJ quotes that say, "Come to West Orange, it's Restaurant Week," which is very new to us, so. In addition to that, we have six banners that are out, and four sandwich boards all over town. We also made these cute little posters for the windows, especially made two per business, one is in the window, and the other one is by the register, for, for the cashier or the hostess to remember that it's Restaurant Week and charge accordingly, since we had a couple of hiccups last time we did it. So, in addition to all of that, and still by the time this airs on Thursday or Friday, there'll still be a couple more days, you can email me at downtown@westorange.org your receipt from any of the 23 restaurants, and you will win a chance for a $250 gift certificate, there'll be multiple gift certificates, from all the restaurants that are participating in Restaurant Week. So, we already have a few people that have sent me emails, and it's good to judge, you know, where people are going and the questions that they're asking. A couple of the more special offers, or I guess the biggest values, are at the Brown Bear, they're doing buy one burger, get one burger free, any burger you want, free. We also have at Suzie Q's and Don Juan's Restaurant, they're doing an appetizer entree and dessert for $20.18, 2018, which I thought was really cute. Patty Spango up at Starlight is also doing a pretty neat one. They're celebrating 57 years in business, so she will give you a pizza or an entree. When you buy one at regular price, you get the second for $5.70. So, that one is definitely a big deal. So, there's 20% off at a bunch of other restaurants, there's free egg rolls and free desserts, all kinds of stuff. We just really want people to get out there and spend some money locally on restaurants that you've been to before, and check out stuff that you haven't seen before. So, that is it on that. The second part of what I want to say, unless you have any questions about Restaurant Week, did I mention we have 23 restaurants?
Speaking, from last year.
Megan, good job. I mean, I saw the sandwich boards look great, the banners are great, and the signs are great in the store, you know, so it really, great job. Just wanted to ask a question, have you getting any hits, knowing how the restaurants and merchants are doing, what the traffic's like?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Any notice on the traffic, like, what volume is, any increases, any number of...
Not yet. I'm hoping that, that they do that. I know that we have 1,354 hits as of, like, 5:30 on our Facebook page, so that's how many people have seen the ads and the talk about it, so hopefully, they will see that. We definitely have had some bad couple of weather days, which, which, you know, isn't great, and the parade got moved, definitely is a consideration. We were hoping for a big kickoff on the day of the parade, but I will not be deterred. I'm sure it's gonna be fabulous by the time we're done, and people keep emailing me with questions. Okay. So, the rest of what we do downtown is we're working with the Design Committee. We have two members of the Downtown Alliance, Ron Raymond and Mike Breck. Ron, come on up. We've been talking about the design guidelines for a while now, and they are finally done, but I wanted to introduce Ron and let Ron kind of talk about, you know, where they've, where they've come from, and what our whole Design Committee is really all about. So, Ron.
Good evening, Madam President, and fellow council members. So, Megan asked me to just come up here and just quickly introduce myself and the Design Committee, talk about what we've been doing for the past, I've been on the committee for the last two years now, working on, you know, various iterations of engagement with the local downtown business owners, as well as creating a vehicle for corp, you know, communicating and integrating the downtown sign ordinance, and the revitalization, beautification of downtown business owners. So, we created the first issue of our design guidelines, contributions from our town historian, Joe Fagan. I'll pass them around for you to take a look at. So, what it is, again, it's a bridge between the ordinance and everyday folks to take a look. Lots of pictures in here, explanations as to what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and make it easier for them to understand. So, in addition to that, we also have a sign application form, which, you know, concisely shows how and information for the, for business owners to understand what are they doing, how are they filling it out, what's the form, and again, making the process a little seamless for the, for the business owners. So, I'll pass that around as well. And lastly, we created a CIDS map, again, to, to show the business owners specifically, where are you within the corridor of the Improvement Committee, the Improvement Downtown Special Improvement District, to see if you are in that, in that particular area. And I think this ties into the grant applications and the support that we lend to the local business owners, to let them understand that it's not an arduous process, we're here to help you. In addition to that, we actually spent time walking around and engaging with the business owners. If there's any infractions, anything that we want to help them improve on, we point it out and help them understand the transition between complying with the ordinances, so those are the things that we've been working on and will continue to work on.
I kinda wanna talk more about it. So, if you go through the actual book, you'll hit where it says acknowledgements, and kind of, we specifically ended up with Ron, because he was a project manager and an engineer, and we wanted that type of mindset on the Design Committee, and we found him about two years ago. So, we've been talking about updating the guidelines and really having a clear interpretation of, of what the ordinance says. The ordinance is difficult to read, and this was completely labor-intensive, going through the ordinance, making sure that what we're telling people we need to have happen is actually what the, what the ordinance says. But between Ron and his team, we ended up with Madeline McLammy, who was supposed to be here, I'm not sure where she is, she has kids, and they always end up getting in the way of nighttime meetings, but...
Or they participate.
Right. Madeline was, was the one that after we were almost done, really went through and had some super edits to the copy, and her edits were so good that I needed to make them. You know, they, they really were helpful. It's not gonna be a document that is printed, we didn't make a lot of copies, it is a document that will be online, which is why it's bound this way, and, you know, the architects will go to one section, engineers will go to another section, business owners will go to the sign section, there'll be different bits and pieces of it that everyone would need. We're gonna make a presentation before the Planning Board and make sure that they all have a copy of it. I guess design guidelines started becoming important about 15 years ago, and I'm not sure why Sue Borg never had us tackle this, maybe I do know, because it was really hard. Sue would just deal with the application as it came up and make changes to it, rather than providing, you know, one good concrete document that everyone can go to without talking to someone. You know, this is in, you know, really easy, clear language, so I really wanted to give a shout-out to Ron and Madeline and Elmina, because they were, and even prelinks, they, they ended up printing it for us, but we gave them Word copy and a thing of pictures, and they put it all together. It was a labor-some act, and I told them, all my downtown friends would want to use them for their guidelines, but it's, it's a lot of work. So, do you have any questions about that? You can see, we did good pictures of storefronts, and the bad pictures were not of our downtown. That's like a wall.
Purposely.
Yeah, purposely, right. And we did get a grant from Main Street, New Jersey, at the end of 2016. They, they gave us a professional that really provided the backbone to the document, and then we filled it in with all of our West Orange staff.
No, let the, let the councilwoman go.
You wanna go first, Jeff?
Oh, you first, go ahead.
Great, great job attending all the downtown seminars the past few years, going and receiving this type of document at those seminars, and now having our own is, is really, really exciting, and Ron, and I wish Madeline was here. Great job, because I know how labor-intensive this, this all is. It really gives a visual, great visual snapshot to the business owners, which sometimes is so hard for them to understand, and it's even hard for them to attend all these seminars that are available to them because of the timeframe, and they're in their stores early in the morning, so to have this document is really a great valuable...
My bad, my bad, Councilwoman.
Gremlins? So, kudos, long time coming, but again, you know, this is all volunteer work on your part, so, thank you, thank you, thank you for, for the township. I also do wanna ask, make one thing, with the parking lots, it's something we had discussed, are these all, did Lenny have these in, on Google Maps now, so if somebody wants to Google them, they can?
Yeah.
And know where the parking lots are for shopping?
They absolutely are. It took us a little while, because the, the parking lots needed addresses, so the police department calls each parking lot just a number, didn't necessarily had an address, so we had to go back to engineering, and it took a little bit of time, but now with a actual address, we're able to plot where they are. I'm still getting them named, so when you go in, you do three Mississippi Ave, it will, Google makes you go through a little, you know, jump through some hoops, but it'll be named, George Quigley Municipal Lot on Google Maps, so, which will be, which will be great. The other thing that, that's really good about this map, in addition to the parking lots, and actually, it was Shari, she's my profitero, I sent it up to her, and I said, you know, should we put something on the back, what should we do with that? And she said, "Put the parking lots on, everyone's always talking about the parking lots." So, that's how we ended up being able to earmark. And the Land O' Lot has three entrances to it, and the Lindsay Ave Lot has two, so, which people don't know. But what's great about the map is that people in the Planning Department, they, you know, say, "Oh, I, you know, I'm at 101 Main Street, am I in the CIDS?" And they go to the big map, and now you can look right there, it has a key, it'll tell you very clearly, you know, if you're in the CIDS, if you're not in the CIDS.
And then the last question I have for you is, I guess, about the process. So, someone, so just walk through this with the public for a second. A new business owner comes in, how they see this booklet, and tell the great work that you're doing with the businesses that are already on Main Street or in the corridor, that you're going to, you know, try to help them along with rent, maybe doing some renovations with grants and whatnot.
Right. That exact document that the actual business owner will get is not that document. That is 70 pages or 38 pages back and front, so, and they don't need all of it, they need little parts of it. So, the Design Committee is working on a pullout of that document, which will probably end up being four or five pages long, whether it's 11 by 17 or folded up, that will have specific owner information, "Dear business owner, this is what you need to do," kind of get them through a flowchart. That is still coming. This is gonna be an online document that follows the ordinance, that if you go to the sign section, it'll be on our website and the Township website, and you can go right to page 25, and that's your sign ordinance. So, that, that's how, that's how people can refer back to it. Architects and engineers that aren't familiar with West Orange, what I thought was really neat, and guidelines were brand-new to me, I had no real understanding of how important they were, or how useful they were. What we really want is to ensure that the buildings are authentic in their facade. We don't want them to cover it up with stucco, we don't want them to put aluminum siding on them, we want them to restore the brick that's there, not paint over the brick. So, these are, in theory, the guidelines that all of us would wanna see, and, and this is what the Planning Department in the master plan has created, that we are authentic in our design, that if there's a window there, it should stay there, and that's the kind of guidelines that these will provide to everyone.
And zoning will have this in their department?
Yes, yeah.
Councilman? Megan, Ron, thank you. It's, it's a great piece of work, it's the great effort and everything, it's a good marketing tool. It shows residents and non-residents that were really put together, that were organized, that we have the materials they need to simply go and get everything they need, takes them through the ordinance. So, I'm very proud of you guys, the whole group, you know, it really took a team effort, and you pulled it together, and it's something that shows that West Orange has a lot to offer, this is what's here, this is what we'd like to do to maintain the scope of the downtown, you know, the integrity, the buildings and the sculpture. So, my kudos to, you know, all of you, and I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Let me just mention one other thing, on the sign permit, on the application instructions, that's the second thing? That, thank you. Okay, so if you look at this document, nowhere on there does it say it's a sign permit on the forms. When you go up and you say, "I need a new sign," the Planning Department hands you this envelope, this like folder with these documents, nothing says sign on it, nothing says where you fill out the sign, and these are state-mandated forms, so if you're gonna demolish your building, you get this form, if you're gonna build the building, you get this form, if you're gonna put a sign up, you get this form. So, we really thought that it was going to be important to highlight what are the sections that our business owners need to fill out, so it's not such a daunting process. Ron, through his day-to-day job, fills out a lot of these, but it's still, the first, the first section is owner and fee. Who is that? What does that even mean? That's the property owner, not even the person that's paying for the, the permit. So, we... Okay, so if you look at this document, nowhere on there does it say it's a sign permit on the forms. When you go up and you say, I need a new sign, the planning department hands you this envelope, this like folder with these documents, nothing says sign on it. Nothing says where you fill out the sign. And these are state-mandated forms, so if you're going to demolish your building, you get this form. If you're going to build the building, you get this form. If you're going to put a sign up, you get this form. So, we really thought that it was going to be important to highlight what are the sections that our business owners need to fill out. So, it's not such a daunting process. Ron, through his day-to-day job, fills out a lot of these, but it's still, the first section is owner and fee. Who is that? What does that even mean? That's the property owner, not even the person that's paying for the permit. So, we highlighting in red what are the sections that you need to fill out and then what those sections mean, how much it costs, and then where to bring it to and how long it's going to take for it to get processed. So, we really, after doing this for a couple of years and understanding what are some of the struggles that people have with filling out the form, and again, this is, so, we don't have to, not that we wouldn't lead anyone through, but it, this is, here you go, you don't need to talk to me, or Ron, or somebody on the design committee, it's ready to go. And it's very clear what the process is.
But also to add to that, part of the design committee's intention is to really work with the business owners so as they're going through the process. You know, answer, be there to answer their questions. So, again, to lessen the burden of, you know, them being too inundated with the frustration of, you know, complying with signs.
Trying to understand the ordinances, right. Excellent. Nicely done, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you too. Another question, Megan. Oh, are you talking?
Sorry.
How many new sign promotions have we done since this year or since our last quarter? Like, how many signs have we paid for through grants and assistance?
Well, if Jim Fitzpatrick gets here, he's here. Okay, so we're going to talk about his sign in a little bit. We have a new business owner, actually Ron brought up, that we should make a big deal. And when I first started, we did make a big deal when we gave money back for, under the facade grant. And we kind of got away from that and it's a really good idea. It does two things, we get to celebrate a brand-new business that's in our downtown, we get to let everyone know that we give away money, up to $20,000 in any one year, and that it's available. It also allows us to have a little bit of control over what the sign looks like. When we have an interaction with the business owners, we're able to say, okay, do you really want that shadow thing on that sign? Or wouldn't this color look better with your, you know, your storefront? And really help guide them into a much more appealing, tasteful sign. So, yeah, we have, actually, we, the big push is, and we're actually going to, we're working on a form that will go with the facade application, so that it'll again be just another thing that we can hand property and business owners. But we have the sideways signs. So, you'll see Advantage Past Control and they were in the budget presentation. So, we have Advantage Past Control's brand-new sign and a sideways sign. We have Wasabi Sushi sideways sign and their new front sign. Fitzgerald and Crouch has a new sideways sign.
Isabel's.
Oh, Isabel's was our very first one. Hers is really a very nice sideways sign, or blade sign they call it. So, we have, there's new businesses and signs coming and going and we're very busy with all of that.
My last question to you, Megan, is when are we going to launch Vision 360, the new database?
Ah, okay, so I was on a call today and it's, I'm so excited about that whole thing. Yeah, it's, if we didn't have Restaurant Week, it would be done. Yeah, we're ready, very close. I have one more educational session and all the data is in and I really like the way it looks and I love the way I'm going to be able to correspond with everyone. It's such a clean and easy way, so days, we're days away.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you, council president. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Ron.
Nicely done. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Meg. Nicely done. I like that the explanations, besides it's so visual, that there are explanations and reasons why you're making these recommendations. Very nicely done.
Thank you.
Councilman Srelow, did you?
Yeah, you know what, in recognition of Ron's work also, I would like to get to know a little bit more about Ron, or maybe you can say a few words about his professional background to the community.
You can't get away with it.
Can't get away, Ron.
You know, he's a really quiet guy and his team has been our most met team of people. They even came in, I didn't want to spend $300 to have it bound, so I found a machine and the design team came in on a Saturday and bound all the copies for us, so.
Say a little bit about yourself, Ron. Thank you for your work.
Thanks for asking. So, my professional background is in mechanical engineering. I've been in the construction industry for the past 20 years. My focus is on renewable and efficiency, energy efficiency. So, I work with a variety of companies, both US and internationally, to build cogeneration facilities and a range of other energy infrastructure projects. In addition to that, I am a local New Jersey master HVAC contractor. So, hence the filling out of these forms.
And Ron's also been helpful on our environmental commission as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't you stay up here? And Mike Brick, why don't you come? Okay, so, we have a new business, Jim Fitzpatrick. Come on up. Jim is the, you're the managing partner for the...
Actually, I'm not, I'm an associate.
Oh, associate, okay.
I'm a lieutenant in the office.
Okay, all right, well, very nice to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you all for having me.
Yes, okay, so, this is the very first business that enters the corridor from Orange. It's Fitzgerald and Crouch. The Fitzgerald Law Firm was there for a while, they were reorganizing and I guess they just reopened now under Fitzgerald and Crouch. They're spending a lot of time and money on their storefront and we have all new signs that went in. So, we have actually the big old check.
Oh, jeez.
The third time I got to use the check. Wait, get the guys in there.
Megan, you should get in there too.
Yeah, you're here.
All right, there we go. So, it's $1,952.
Mike.
(inaudible).
Come on, smile, okay?
Yes.
Did you want to say something about the water?
I'll say two words shortly.
There you go.
Thank you so much. First, thanks for having me, I really appreciate it. And really, you know, from my office, kudos to your folks for providing the opportunity to us. I know Nick Fitzgerald and Sarah Crouch, they're principals of the firm. We're a bankruptcy firm down the street, if anybody's in, knowing if anybody needing assistance, by all means send them our way, we're happy to meet with them. As Megan said, we're right down the road. We're trying to serve the local Orange and East Orange and West Orange communities. Again, we do everything from bankruptcy to mortgage modification, foreclosure defense, that kind of work. So, we specialize in that, that's primarily our business. So, we also refer a lot of business out to folks who can assist in other areas, but that's primarily what we do. Okay? So, we also have an office in Jersey City, we serve Hudson County as well. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Welcome.
And Nick is so excited.
Actually, I know. I know, we were excited to have, you know, such a willing partner downtown. Now, that whole street between Benji's, MiCuisina, Heavenly Hair, Los Capoteos, and you guys is, you know, we're set. There's activity back and forth, people are walking across the street and back and forth all the time. So, welcome and I hope you're here for a very long time.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, welcome.
Thanks, guys, I didn't need to take up so much of your time.
Oh, good stuff.
But be at work even earlier tomorrow, so. She didn't hear.
She never ends...
Megan, make sure you're at work even earlier tomorrow morning.
Thank you, thanks, Mike. Council liaison announcement?
Yeah.
Anyone?
Thank you, council president.
Follow-up with the downtown, good.
Thank you. Thank you, my colleagues. Megan, again, thank you, you know, great presentation from our Downtown Alliance. Also, too, on Thursday night at 7:30 PM at the Essex County Educational Center at Turtleback Zoo, we'll have our monthly West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting to go over our plans for the spring, our spring bike rodeo, our safety and student education programs, our complete streets. Hopefully, Mr. LaPaul will give you some good, good news and everything else about our road diet on Main Street and the mid-block crosswalks. So, those are things that we should be talking about at the meeting. We hope all can attend, please bring your ideas and your concerns, that we'd like to hear from our residents. And it's a great opportunity to get to meet the members of the board. It's a great combination of 11 well-dedicated, well, you know, focused members of our community who bring great expertise in traffic safety, traffic planning, construction, code enforcement, you know, Main Street, the Thomas Edison Museum, so we hope we'll see people there and we want your input. And thank you very much. Also, updates on Rent-a-House. The great announcement yesterday at our Rent-a-House meeting was that the bids were approved for a painting and new flooring throughout Rent-a-House that complements the new windows that were recently installed. We've only had two problems and the engineers are going back to work on the two. The drafts and the controls of the elevators have been rectified. So, Rent-a-House is really chugging along. We've been trying to have the resident meeting, but we found that, of course, the Senior Citizen Resident Association disbanded. So, now we have a new resident who we're hoping will take over and recreate the resident board, so to get their input. But the residents will be asked about different colors that we're going to paint, the flooring, the tiles throughout the whole building, spackling, patching of walls. So, really put a good fresh coat of paint, good facelift on our thing. And it's just the beginning of what we're going to do at Rent-a-House and our capital improvement. We have a significant base in our capital budget and our budget is replenished every month through deposits in the account from the revenues from rentals. So, Madam President, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Kukovych?
Thank you. I don't have any liaison announcements for the groups that I liaison for, but I just thought it might be helpful to people to know that our budget hearing is coming up this Saturday, starting at 9:00 AM, running to approximately 6:00 PM. The mayor has proposed a 2% tax increase and a 4.4% increase in the overall budget. And I don't think it's on our town website yet, but maybe we'll get it up there soon. I've put it up on social media, so you can probably find it in some of the more heavily-traveled Facebook sites. But would welcome people to come and see the budget line by line. We look at it line by line, it usually takes us an entire day.
Long day.
All day.
Thank you. Yes, councilman?
Okay. Council president, I probably should have did this in the beginning of the meeting, but I was wondering if we could just take a moment of silence for the teacher that was unfortunately hit by a vehicle a couple of weeks ago in the township. Beloved first grade teacher from Washington School, Patricia Villarosa, had passed this past Friday and she'll be, funeral services are tomorrow morning, so we just all take a moment of silence and pray for her and her family.
Thank you.
So, being the liaison to the Board of Education, I attended Wednesday, February 28th, the Safety and Security Meeting at West Orange High School. I'd like to thank Mr. Rutske and my former colleagues at the school board for putting on the presentation for the community. Chief Abbott was available, as well as Deputy Chiefs Buie and Fula, Captain Delgauer, Mike Keegler are captain, and Lieutenant John Morella and Officer Diaz, who is currently the school resource officer up at the high school. Some of the items they went over were safety drill procedures, lockdown, they're constantly having security drills up at the high school, communications, reaching the families, talking about an app for the employees in case something occurs during the school day at the district. And ongoing safety procedures, they've been, past year's been replacement of doors, windows and locks, protective film over the lower level of the windows, constantly upgrading new security cameras and so on. A lot of great questions were asked by the community, a lot of great ideas and statements. Some of the things that stuck out were, folks were concerned with the communication with the incidences when they occur and how the information could get to the parents, which they went over. Sometimes folks see, or officers, and they don't realize that they're at side jobs during the day and they were wondering if we'd get more police officers at the school. Few years back, the school resource officers, we used to have five of them in our schools, we used to have two at the high school, one at Edison Middle School, Liberty and Roosevelt, and they were all funded by grants. So, today, we met with the, with our grant writer and speaking with Lieutenant Morella, who has been phenomenal, he's the supervisor of the school resource program with, between the police department and the school district. And so, they're constantly looking at grants, we're hoping with the climate of, on the national level, that Homeland Security will be offering some more grants, so we could get some more, have that opportunity to get some more school resource officers. Again, a lot of great ideas, as, you know, councilman just said, we have our budget hearing on Saturday and budgets are always, not just for us, but also for the school district, always something that we struggle with, with the balance of safety and security. But the school is very proactive with health and wellness of their students and, you know, what we saw in Florida, a lot of red flags for that young man that were not picked up. And we have great programs here and Grace, our teaching and our deans and our guidance counselors within school district are always, you know, able and ready to give whatever health and wellness we need to our students. So, it was a great community forum. One other thing folks asked about was, of course, voting, moving the voting out of our schools. And I mentioned, Councilwoman, how your efforts the past few years with that and being successful with, at least we moved it out of Redwood School. But we were fortunate that the Willshire Grand Hotel stepped up to take some of the voting booths there. So, these are things that had to be approved by the county and, of course, the facility has been willing to take the voting within the school. So, talking with the school board as well, you know, they go from year to year, they have closed school on occasion, school days, and again, they have a calendar to meet with so many days, especially now with snow days that were just taken. So, you know, a lot of great discussion and kudos to the community that came out, there's a couple hundred people that came out to this event. And we had a few students that spoke and it was really, it was really heartwarming to hear them. And, you know, it's just sad that this is where we're at in this day and age, that, you know, our kids have to be fearful to go to school and when they see events such as this on television. But, you know, we're going to be in the forefront of training our officers. Lieutenant Morella spoke about, you know, training within the school and the staff, which is key and important. And we're going to be proactive on this to make sure that everyone feels safe and secure in our school. So, we look forward to more information on that and that will be a constant work in Also, with the grant writer today, I sat with her, she was in town. Councilwoman, you're, council president, you're going to be talking about one of the meetings that we had. Again, thank you to the school district, Mr. Rutske and school officials for making themselves available on a grant that Councilwoman will be speaking about. But prior to that, I got to work with our health director, Ms. DeNova, in regards to the senior citizen survey. So, we're hoping next meeting, we'll be able to put that on, we'll have the survey. Montclair State, I believe, will be available to come in to talk to the public for the results and we'll be able to have a presentation. So, Mr. Sayers, we're probably going to need the projector and whatnot, a screen, because she'll do a presentation for us from Montclair State. So, we look forward to that. And working, I want to thank Catherine Kapoor from Millennial and the administration for being so proactive in getting this grant writer when Denise Rodriguez had left and Catherine, who also works for Millennial, they're phenomenal, phenomenal company. And we look forward to, you know, trying to obtain more revenue, especially with the challenges with our budget and all of our needs that we have within our community. We're going to just keep trying to, you know, utilize that company to obtain some more grants for us. So, I just want to thank her for her time today and we look forward to working on the grant for the Partners in Health this spring. And again, you said at the beginning of the meeting, but thank you to Public Works, the Police and Fire Department for a great job with the storm. It was a long week for you, Mr. Sayers, and we spoke a few times and everyone was really p... We're going to just keep trying to, you know, utilize that company to obtain some more grants for us. So I just want to thank her for her time today. And we look forward to working on the grant for the Partners in Health this spring. And again, you said at the beginning of the meeting, but thank you to Public Works, the Police and Fire Department for a great job with the storm. It was a long week for you, Mr. Sayers. And we spoke a few times and everyone was really patient. But it is spring and we have our spring fling from the Recreation Department on, let's see, Thursday, March 29th, in a couple of weeks, at 6:00 PM at Liberty Middle School. So hopefully the snow will be melted and gone, so we'll feel like a real spring fling. And one last note on the Police Department, Sunday, April 22nd, 1 to 4, which I thought this was an interesting event, just to get this out to the folks at West Orange High School, the West Orange Police Department and Mobile Karomagah, I believe they're karate self-defense company. They're going to come in and teach a safety seminar for teens and women, so 13 years and older. So that is Sunday, April 22nd. So that's all the announcements I have. And just kudos to the Parade Committee. I know it was a tough decision to have to move the St. Patrick's Day Parade to this coming Sunday. All the phone calls that had to be made, but again, a great decision with Mother Nature. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cirilla?
Thank you, Council President. The Degnan House, we're meeting this Wednesday at 5:30 PM. We'll have our monthly meeting. In addition to that, we were supposed to meet last week at Highland Avenue Station booth. We're going to meet Wednesday night at 6:30 PM. Because of the snow, it was canceled. So it's going to be postponed. As we all know, we're trying to proactively assist the city of Orange with rehab efforts. In addition to that, trying to see if we can lobby New Jersey Transit to make that a stop during the morning hour so that we can market or incorporate our commuter demands in the town and also assist in improving property values overall, should that become another option for the community population. I do want to commend the administration also on your snow removal efforts. The mayor, Mr. Lapore, who's in the audience, and also the residents for being patient. We had a lot of downed trees, a lot of wires out. And it was a significant storm, one of the biggest that we've seen in the last few years. Last time I remember was probably Halloween, right? Mr. Kaiser and I were just talking about, we both had branches that fell on top of our homes this past week. But yeah, but good job to all of you and the Department of Public Works. So thank you very much. Councilman spoke about the budget process. The state of New Jersey also made a presentation this morning on the state budget. This is the governor's presentation, like in the township, we have the mayor's presentation. And now, just like the township, the council goes and reviews that proposal. Same thing is going to happen at the state level. A couple of things that stand out is, and this helps, township is a projected increase of education funds to over 94% of the communities will see an increase. A total of $283 million being allocated at the state level for education. So that should help us out, I hope. I'll have to take a look, I'll look at the list of communities that are being impacted to assure that we're in the 94%. And we've heard in the news about the cap of property tax deductions at the federal level. The state also has a cap, the state of New Jersey, and that's $10,000 as well, which is in line with the expected cap that's going to be implemented at the federal level next year. In this budget proposal, the governor is increasing that cap to 15% on your state of New Jersey income taxes. So hopefully that passes through the legislature and we can deduct more of our property taxes at the state level. Other than that, Council President, thank you very much.
That was plenty. Thank you. Thank you for the information. Thank you. Few mentions of the grants, and I just wanted to go back to the schools getting the vote out of the schools. I work closely with Karen and the Board of Elections Clerk. So that is a work in progress and we'll continue to work that. You mentioned our grant writer. I just submitted on behalf of the Police Department, the Partners for Health has a $10,000 grant. They're looking for nominations for a Community Impact Awardee. And I believe that the Operation Hope program fits that perfectly. So we've been working with the grant writer and the Police Department and Lieutenant McDonald and Jessica Meyer at the Richard Trank's office. So, and the Health Department, all coordinating those efforts for that grant that's due on Friday. Victor just mentioned the Highland Avenue Station. The NJTPA has a technical assistance program that we're looking at. We're kind of doing it backwards since we have so much in the Highland Avenue Station. We need the station. We have the area needed redevelopment, we have Luna Stage, we have an art gallery, we have Valley Arts, businesses that are thriving there, and we need the station. So we're looking at this also, Technical Assistance Planning Grant, that would help with that very, very active community there around, surrounding the Friends of Highland Avenue Station. Tomorrow, the Environmental Commission, Mike Brick is still here, Chair of the Environmental Commission. We have our annual Earth Hour tomorrow at four o'clock. Sponsored, the Environmental Commission sponsors the event. It's hosted at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park. That's at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon. And that really is, we have guest speakers. It's to kick off the global efforts that are made to conserve energy and the environment. We have 171 countries participate in Earth Hour. The actual day is March 24th. And the simple thing that we ask what the world to do is turn your lights off for one hour on March 24th from 8:30 to 9:30. And just go to earthhour.org and you'll see what a phenomenal effect that has. So tomorrow, you're invited. It's a free event tomorrow at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park at four o'clock. Guest speakers and students talking about their sustainable projects that they're working on. The Arts Council has the West Orange High School AP Art Exhibit on until the end of the month. Very interesting programs there. And also at the West Orange High School Drama Department, they're proud to present the musical In the Heights with music and lyrics by Lin-Manuel Miranda. The performance will be on Thursday, April 12th, and Saturday, April 14th at seven o'clock. Sunday, April 15th at two o'clock at the West Orange High School Auditorium. Tickets are $11 for students and seniors and 13 for adults. There's so much more. I think we're going to save it for next time.
Council President, I think you should mention your hard work on the tree ordinance. Can you say a little bit about that effort?
Sure. There's many people in town. We have the Environmental Commission, on behalf of the Environmental Commission, we have been meeting to redline the tree ordinance after last week's storm had a direct impact on that tree ordinance. So we're back to the drawing board again. Thankfully, Lenny, our town engineer and our tree forester have been attending the meetings to help us with that. We're on page six out of 11, so we just continue to plug away. I projected the ordinance on screen and we've been making comments along the way. Thank you. This is the first time, because of the storm, that in my tenure on the planning board, that the planning board meeting for March was canceled. It's rescheduled for April 4th. It's never been canceled that I know of. And you mentioned the grant. So just this afternoon, it was supposed to be a small, little brainstorming meeting this afternoon. There's a Bloomberg philanthropic public art installation grant that's coming out, up to $1 million. And what turned out to be a small, little working meeting turned out to be
Big brainstorm.
A big brainstorming meeting. It was kind of better because now we have so many ideas and we have to hone it in. But we had a nice representation from across town. This will be a town-wide public art installation. And we're just at the start of putting that together. So that was very exciting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Cirilla?
Present.
Councilwoman Garino?
Present.
Councilwoman Kocoviac?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. If you have any public comment, please come to the lectern, name and address. Welcome.
Sherry Prukas, 12 Swayze Street. And I'm on the Library Board of Trustees and that's why I'm here. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about some of the good works that the library is doing and highlight a couple of things for this month, as well as thank the town for the next step of what we're doing and capital work on the building. So the first thing that I want to talk about were three important programs for this month. One is that we're doing a citizens' exam preparatory course. On Monday and Wednesday evenings, it just started, tonight's Tuesday just started last night. There are still openings, so if you know anybody who would benefit from such a class, please have them call the library. There's still a few openings. Every Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00, there's English as a Second Language class, all open to the public in West Orange. This month, what we're doing special is an art show called Women Speak, Speaking Our Truth, Portraits and Photos and Words. On March 25th, which is a Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00, there's a reception. And I wanted just to take a moment to thank the town for working with the library on our capital plans and the issues that we have with the building. It is an older building. And about two years ago, we hired an architect who specializes in library buildings. And he helped us put together a list of things that, you know, had to be done or the building falls down, as opposed to nice to be done because our residents in town would like it. So we've been prioritizing them. Obviously, the first one was doing the facade of the building because it literally fell down. So we had to lift it back up. So now what we want to work on is the roof. And the town is going to put out the, you call them RFPs too, right? It's going to put out the RFPs and to do the work and find out exactly what it is that we need to do to redo our roof. The roof is important for a lot of reasons, obviously. But one of the things is that there are ramps available now to put solar panels on library roofs. And our roof is really perfect because it's a flat roof. But before we put a solar panel on it, we have to make sure that the roof is in good working order. So I think this will work very well. The town will work with the library for the funding and the work. And Lenny, of course, will oversee it because we need the appropriate expertise and we thank him for that so that the roof is in good order. And in the meantime, we're going to move, Dave Kubey will be working to put out, to submit for the grant for the solar panels. So we wanted to thank the town for working with us on it. And we hope that everybody who watches and listens will come out to the programs. We think they're very important and really help the citizens of West Orange.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Brick?
The Town Council, Mike Brick, 19 Colony Drive West, 45 years. And I'd like to speak to you as Chairman of the Environmental Commission. Susan put forth the reason and these particulars why we have the Earth Hour Booster for Earth Hour itself. And sitting at this meeting tonight, realizing that Earth Hour is concerning climate change. So I would like to just quickly zero in on that. We just had three nor'easters. One was a windstorm, one was a giant snowstorm, and this one was a smaller snowstorm. Because of climate change, it could have been very possible that we had three horrible nor'easters. We could have had multiple feet of snow. We could have had total paralysis in town. Thank goodness, we did not have that. So Earth Hour is an opportunity for everyone in the town and the world to take a deep breath, turn your lights off on the 24th between 8:30 and 9:30. Go to the website. They give, it's at earthhour.org. They give a lot of examples of what to do during that hour of darkness. It does not have to be totally dark. It's got to be safe. You could light candles. You could have a searchlight. You can see each other. But the discussion is that we have climate change. Whether you think it's man-made or God-made, however it is done, the structure of the earth is changing. And we have global, we have greenhouse warming. We have, the mean temperature of the world is increasing dramatically. We have shifts in the jet streams, which means that we call it global weirding versus global warming because things that are hot get cold, things that are cold get hot, things that are dry get wet, things that are wet get dry. And we have this shift. So here we are in West Orange and we think we have plenty of water. And we think we're in a fairly safe part of the world. But we just escaped a bullet. And it's going to continue to happen. So I'm asking our citizens to be aware. Earth Hour was created for our benefit. There are hundreds of millions of people all over the world who observe it. It has nothing to do with Earth Day, although they're associated. And our booster event is to bring attention to our schools, our citizens, our elected officials, that we will be facing more and more of the types of adverse weather that we've had in these past three weeks. And there will be droughts that are long-term. There'll be wet periods that are flooding. And we don't know exactly. But rather than put your head in the sand as an ostrich would do and ignore it, Earth Hour is an opportunity and we bring it to the town's attention so that we can be proactive to the benefit of our town, our state, our country and the earth. So thank you. We ask you to watch our event. We ask you to observe Earth Hour on the 24th. One of the things we have that's totally dramatic is we have the view of the New York skyline. And if you want to see something that is really unique, at 8:30 on the 24th, 60 to 70% of the New York skyline goes dark for an hour. And if you watch the Empire State Building and see it go dark, it kind of gives you a premonition of what could happen if the lights go out because of climate change. And it's a great opportunity to just do that. Susan and I have been up there, I think Joe, you've been up there to see it. And it's a dramatic impact upon us that we don't have this permanency that we think we have. That's not to be scared of it. It's to do the best we possibly can with it. And that's why Earth Hour is here for us to observe. So thank you and I hope we do.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hello?
Mark Meyer, it's 19 Howell Drive. Speaking of nor'easters, I was watching, I think, the Fox News last night at 10. They had a climatologist on who was saying that it's actually fairly common in March to have rapid nor'easters like this. And the phenomenon goes back hundreds of years. He was talking about some years in the 1800s in which in March you would get these rapid nor'easters. And he wasn't saying anything about climate change or anything like that. He was just saying that the cold air coming down from Canada meets the warm air from the ocean coming up from the south, from Florida area of the Caribbean. And they clash with each other. And the results are all these big storms in rapid succession. He was on about a quarter of 11 last night, if you could find the tape. But he wasn't talking about climate change or man-made this or man-made that. It's a natural phenomenon. That's probably always been there since, you know, for the past few million years. So, you know, I'm not a believer in man-made climate change, but we should know the real reasons behind things. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Alan Grossman, 4 North Cowing Place. We did, yeah, I'm sure there are many wires probably still down in town, including on my block. We did call, you know, originally when the storm first hit, but it's been a few days. And I think PSENG checked it out. I don't think it was an electric wire. It might be a cable wire. At any rate, if there's still doubt of which, and it's a neighbor's wire, if it's still down and, you know, know exactly what it is or whose it is, just I'd appreciate it who to check with on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anthony. Sir, did you want to speak on an ordinance? Yes. We understand. You've been there a long time. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive De Fincenzo. I just, in front of you, left our latest The Spirit of Essex magazine, which not only highlights all spring events hosted by Essex County, but there's a section towards the end that hosts community events from museums, performing arts centers from around the county. I left some additional copies on the table outside. And of course, all the information that's in here is on our website, which is essexcountyNJ.org. I just want to point out that, again, in April, we'll have our 42nd Annual Cherry Blossom Festival, which begins on April 7th, which is a Saturday, and continues to April 15th. So we invite you all down to that event. Thank you.
Will the blossoms be out with this?
We hope. We hope the blossoms actually coordinate with our festival this year. The last couple of years, we've been a little off with our timing, but.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Paglisi, first, thank you for your presentation. Did the cherry blossoms get beat up a lot during the last few storms?
We've had significant tree damage in South Mountain Reservation. There's been some in Branch Brook, but it hasn't been as bad. The eastern end of the county was not hit as much as the western end of the county. So the trees are in good shape.
Is there a program or a program in place to replenish the cherry blossoms and restore?
Well, over the last several years, the county executive has had a very aggressive initiative to plant cherry blossom trees. So within the last five years or so, over 5,000 have been planted. So that program has given us more cherry blossoms than even the national display in Washington, DC.
And if I may ask Council President, Mr. Paglisi, it was a great presentation done at the museum a few weeks back about the proposed expansion, which is a 20-year layout rollout. Is there any feedback, anything that has been produced to reflect what was, get what was gotten back from the resident responses and from the county?
You're talking about the Turtleback Zoo Master Plan? So those meetings are still being held. In addition to the public meeting, there were stakeholder meetings with our docents, with the animal keepers, with the Zoological Society. So those meetings are still ongoing, and what they're going to do is take the input from all of those meetings before they come back to us and present another version of the master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman.
Anthony, when is the deadline for if we want to put our summer events in here, you know, the street fair on 4th of July and all that?
I can get that for you.
Yeah, could you please, could you email me, please, so we make sure we meet the deadline to get our summer events on this? Thank you.
Good idea. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, closed public comment. Portion of our meeting. Just say thank you to Sherri for all the announcements of the programs at the library. I just am really, really pleased. I know when Dave Kubi, the director, first started, he said he wanted to move in this direction of making the library more of a community center, and he's definitely moving in that direction, appealing to programming for all ages. Mike, thanks for the mention about Earth Hour. And when Mike talks about our panoramic view that we do have on so many of our hills around town, what does happen on March 24th is that all, there are so many cities that do participate in this Earth Hour. Please go to the site and look at it, but you can actually see in that view all lights that go out except for the nonessential lights. It's, I think it's phenomenal. Phenomenal, right. Right, right. You mentioned the Empire State Building, but it is the Eiffel Tower. It's major buildings around the world. Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, Council President. Earth Day was created in 1970 because at that time, the country was experiencing a lot of threats. And I appreciate Mark's comments about the climate change being a phenomenon, and it's true. I mean, over time, yes, you know, it has been, these climate changes and these cycles have been going on for a long time. However, I see that we do have, and Mike can appreciate that, an increase in population and also infrastructure. So while these storms have been going on for a long time, the level of damage increases when you have more infrastructure and more population, more damage to human beings. So the point of Earth Day is really to recognize that we must care for the environment, and we have to make sure that we lower the amount of pollution and we appreciate our surroundings more than we have had done in the past. So since 1970, we've had this special day to, you know, to lend some attention to the issue. And I hope that we all take a step back and think about, you know, what we have been given and what we're blessed with every day. So thank you for your presentation, Mike. Mark, thank you for your comments. And, yeah, and I hope that everyone participates.
Thank you.
In addition to that, the question of the downed wires, that's a great point. As a matter of fact, I had two sets of wires in front of my house that came down in addition to the branch that fell on top of my roof. I had called PSENG, and before PSENG showed up, we had, I had a fire department truck pass by, and they saw that the cable was down, and they wanted to make sure it was addressed. So what they did was they did an assessment of my wires and where they were going into, and they came to the realization that it was the cable company. It wasn't PSENG. So it was too late to stop PSENG from coming. They did come in when I wasn't there. They left a green tag saying, "Hey, we noticed that your electricity's still on. It's not an electric cable. You have to call Verizon." So to your question, and Ms. Sayer maybe can answer this, is there a department that the township can call just so that residents don't, you know, feel a need to touch wires and assess whether or not it's an electrical issue? Or a telephone man?
First of all, never, first of all, don't ever touch a wire, ever, wherever it is. Second of all, if you call us, we will come out and try to see if it is an electrical wire versus a Comcast wire or a Verizon wire. And if we can identify that, we'll let you know, and then you'll have to call. You personally have to call the company if that wire is coming from your home. Well, if it's coming from your neighbor's home, they're the ones that are going to have to call them. Yeah, they have to call. So if it's Comcast wire, Verizon, you know, they have to call. Usually, during the storm, we had actually a team from PSENG going around town with us checking the wires. But after two days, they left. So all I can tell you is if you want us to come out and look, we can, we will do that. The fire department will do that and let you know what type of wire it is. And then we advise the resident to call who they need to call.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, I mean, PSENG didn't show up to my house until Saturday, and the snowstorm was Thursday. So there were several days, and maybe my neighbors thought I was being deficient. But I had placed a call because of the large amount of calls. They took a long time to get there. However, thankfully, the fire department happened to have, they were passing by a bender, and they saw the wire hanging, and they knocked on my door. So thank you again. And also, the mayor is very proactive in taking information from the Facebook page and routing that to the proper department so that it was being addressed. But, yeah, just call the fire department. They'll come by and check out the wire. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Councilman. Thank you. I wanted to say, though, Alan, I'm sorry I missed that, but I wrote down your address that it's really a thank you to the fire department for their annual report and all the work that they've done over in one year. But they have been around because we couldn't even get plows on our road because of the wires that had been down, and they have a checklist, so they're going to every address, so just report the address to the fire department. Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Mike, thank you for your presentation. Just have one complaint, one small complaint. How come it's at 4:00 and not a little later? No, I understand.
It's televised, and you could watch it on TV.
I don't want to tell, I don't want to watch television. Thank you. Michael, also, are you doing any with the monarch butterflies continually and the milkweed?
Yes, we will have more seeds to distribute and possibly plants.
Sorry, we don't usually do this.
Sorry, we don't do that. I'm sorry.
To answer Jerry in the town coun, is this working? Yeah. To answer Jerry in the town council, we will continue on with the milkweed. It's for the monarch butterfly. It's the only food that it eats. The monarch is in real trouble. It's not extinct, but its numbers are greatly diminished. They were coming back, and there was a freak snowstorm in Mexico two years ago, about 100 miles from Mexico City in the mountains. And a freeze came and decimated probably 70% of the population that overwinters there. So we really have to continue to do that, and we have a source for seeds, so we'll be giving out seeds to people. And we'll continue on with that. I would like to just give 30 seconds and mention something about climate change. There's a large number of people in the country, and I respect their judgment. I don't agree with them. But they feel that there has always been climate change. There always will be climate change. It has nothing to do with people. We've had ice ages. We have the earth's had its evolution. We know that scientists, about 98% of them through the world, all agree, and they're not Republicans or Democrats, that the empirical evidence says that in the past 100 years or so since the Industrial Revolution, we have increased the greenhouse gases, and we're trapping the heat of the earth without going into space. And that's what's a very large mitigating circumstance for global warming.
Okay. Thank you for your commentary.
And so if you believe it, you believe it. If you don't want to believe it, that's up to the people.
Thank you.
My last comment, thank you, Council President, thank you, Mike, is I just, I'm glad to hear the presentation by Ms. Prupus on the West Orange Library. I'm kind of really enthused that they're looking forward to do solar paneling for the roof, and I hope the township can work with them to get that done. That'd be a great accomplishment, a contribution to the environment. And I'm happy to hear that the library is moving in a great direction, more community-minded, more of a community center. Thank you, Council President.
I have a question for Mr. Sayer in regards, and I guess Mr. Lapore is here, but you don't have to answer it right now, just in regards to the library. The downstairs, the lower level, I believe, did Chief Vecchio go in there? Did we, because I know they had to get, they had to get an inspection done to make sure we could utilize that meeting room. Do you know if that was done yet or can you find out?
I'm not sure if the inspection was done, but Mr. Lapore and myself met with Mr. Kubi a week ago, 10 days ago, and went over their capital list. I'm not sure if that inspection ever took place yet.
Okay, because we, yeah, because, you know, we could run some nice events down, well, we have, and now we can't anymore because we didn't realize it was, there was inspection needed to be done, and we need some upgrades down there to make it up to code. Okay, so if you just give, whenever you get a chance to give us an update or, you know, Councilman Koviac and I are on that committee with the library. So we'd like to, I'm sure he's interested in seeing how it's come progressing. And just thank you, everyone, for coming down for your comments. And Mike, I always learn something from you every time we have a conversation. Thanks for participating in the meeting today for the grant. Council President.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, and executive session of February 27, 2018.
Consent.
Court of Township's Officers, municipal court, February 2018. Consent. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening? Council President, they are going to pull the resolution for an executive session because Richard Trent could not be here tonight, so.
We could do that next time. Okay, thank you. Any resolutions? Councilman.
Could we pull Agenda Item A, Resolution 8618, the resolution authorizing the township to execute a service agreement with goose control technology? Please. And then I'd also just like if, to ask the administration if they could just explain a little bit to people about Agenda Item B, Resolution 8718. I know Mr. Lapore is here. He's very knowledgeable. Perhaps we could get him to just give us a couple of minutes on what that legislation is about. And that's all I.
Thank you. Any other resolutions? Colleagues, no.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Before, I'm going to ask my colleagues to go out of order because we know that there are people here that want to talk about the ordinances. So I think we can discuss our resolutions after we hear the questions that are being raised. Yes, sir.
A gentleman in the audience who didn't realize that he, that you closed public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Would like to at least get up on the microphone and give him a couple of minutes.
Absolutely.
Do we have to officially reopen?
I don't think so.
No. Welcome.
I apologize. I'm a little hard of hearing. My name is Bob Verzi, 5 Carolina, West Orange. And I know some of you.
Welcome.
I'm a past West Orange police officer, and I was at the same forum that you were at, and I spoke then. And I'll make it brief. I had a lot of things to say, but I'm just going to make it brief. Since the tragic incident in Florida, the shooting, there's a lot of been talk nationwide about gun control, mental illness, a lot of issues. Issues that this body cannot deal with. This body can deal with other issues, which I believe are important, which is an emergency, and that should put cops in the schools. I think that's our number-one priority now. I was at the forum. The West Orange Police do an excellent job with the manpower. I'm not in '85 anymore.
Politically correct. Okay.
The people that they have, they do an excellent job. But I don't know a chief or police that wish they didn't have more people. All the measures that they do are great, but there's nothing like having a cop armed police officer in a school. That's the way the nation's going. That's the way the state's going. That's the way it has to go. I'm next. Police officer, PBA president, past PBA president, firearms instructor. I am a taxpayer in the town, and I have loved ones, either teachers or students, in schools. So I know, I think, every aspect of this. I took an unofficial survey before I came here, talked to everybody. Not one people, not one person said, "Don't put a cop in this school." That's where we're going. That's an emergency. Now, I know I made, I negotiated many contracts with Jack and budget, budget, budget. I understand that. But I also understand, my furnace went out this winter. I had to change my budget because this was an emergency. I had to get a furnace. I know you can change your budget if you have to. I know this body right now can approve overtime and put I know this body right now can approve overtime and put cops in the school. I'm telling you right now, with my past experience and from what I know, you have to do that. We need police, armed police in the school. I worked in the school for a while when I retired, I have a job, I'm not looking for a job. What they did, which worked well, they put the armed officer at the front door, they locked down the school. You could get out, you couldn't get in. Came through the front door, you had to go past the cop, he sent you to the principal's office, from there they called upstairs, and the student came down. Nobody wandered the school. It works well. Like they said at the forum, there's no hundred percent on anything. But the basic is, I was just up at the shoplift, I go to shoplift every day. There's an armed security guard up there with a tactical vest guarding the tomatoes, but we can't get a cop in the school guarding our kids? I don't believe that. I believe we could do what's important. To me, the most important thing that you have on your agenda right now is putting cops in the school. No matter how you have to do it, you have to do it. I'm simple, Jack knows me on time. I'm a simple guy. I come up, I read this in the Chronicle. West Orange Township Council approved resolution that will allow township purchased property Eagle Rock Avenue is eventually turned into a parking lot. Four-to-one vote, blah, 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 at four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I'm simple. Cancel the contract. I know Ken Kaiser's here, I dealt with him, that's a good lawyer. He could get that contract canceled, I know him. That's simple, I know that, and it's not that simple. What I'm saying is, your biggest priority right now is put cops in those schools. We got to guard the kids. Bottom line, all right? I wanted to, I wasn't going to say all that, but I want you, I'm not reading from this, okay? But I know the area, I know the subject. I'm going to go further with this. I'm going to go to whoever's going, you're going to listen to, I'm going to go to the civil, I've made a list of all the different societies that are here, I'm going to go talk to them, I'm going to talk to the senator, the governor, whoever I have to talk to. This is the issue of the ages right now.
Your time is up.
Putting cops in the schools. Thank you for your few minutes. Jack, you know my number, if I could do anything, I'm a volunteer, if you could put volunteers in the schools, if that's legal, I'll get you volunteers, I'll go to the unions, I'll get your people to go and volunteer, go in the school, but you have to have armed people in the school. Thank you very much.
Mr. Verzi, thank you for your insight, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, we're going to go back to?
Can I just add something that I probably should have mentioned? And thank, and thank you, Bob, for coming down. I remember you'd worked with my mother-in-law, and you're a very dedicated officer for many years. One of the, few of the items that was mentioned, again, the committee was going to get back, because it's not just us, it's the school. Right now, in all the middle schools and the high school, there are security guards. Now, again, they're not armed, so that's a, you know, discussion, I see, you know, one of our school board members in the audience this evening, not to put him on the spot, but that's a discussion they need to have in the direction they want to go, if they want to keep their security guards or go towards an armed guard. But our cop, our officers right now, with Chief Abbott had mentioned, they are stopping periodically during the school day in the elementary schools, because they aren't, we don't have officers at the elementary schools, but periodically they pop in. The average response time is pretty rapid, which, which they test time to time, and then on occasion they're having undressed off, I shouldn't say undressed, not in uniform officers stopping by the school. Plainclothes, that was the word I'm looking for. Yeah, that was, that's not good. Plainclothes officers. You can tell I'm not a politician, right? I can't speak to save my life, but plainclothes officers stopping, popping in to see if they could get in the schools, and that's something that they've been testing to see where the weaknesses are. So again, it was a long, it was like a three, four-hour meeting that went on, and it's a work in progress. But thank you so much and your passion, and it's a definite discussion and keep advocating. I'm really hoping the national level will open up these, these grants, because grants, obviously, is what we're all looking for with our budgetary constraints, but it is important, and it is something that is a tough conversation.
You can't just hire, you've got to go to state. You can't just issue your grant.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I just wanted to share those other comments, there were so many comments that evening, so I didn't want to take the time before, but, you know, now that, you know.
We could follow up with that, because I know after the public safety meetings, the, there have been PTA meetings as well that I've been attending, and they're following up. We had the chief and Jack and, and the mayor at the, I know it was at Roosevelt, where they talked about the same thing, police officers making these spot checks, inspections, almost like a fire drill. Now it's a, you know, different focus.
Like I said last meeting, I'll say it again, you know, years ago, we were putting security cameras in our schools to, you know, for the kids misbehaving in certain hallways, and now they're there for their protection. So unfortunately, the world is changing, and we need to adapt, so thank you for your passion.
Councilman?
Just a quick question, Council President, thank you, Councilwoman. As it relates to funding, let's say the policy decision is made, and I see our Board of Education member, Mark Robertson, in the ordinance, let's say the Board of Education decides to police, physically police the grounds, is that a Board of Education expense or is that a municipal expense at that point?
If you're going to hire police officers, it's our expense. If they're going to hire security guards, it would be their expense.
Okay, thank you, that's, yeah, that's important.
That's important, yes.
That, Mr. Gross brought up a good point. If they wanted to hire police officers as side jobs, it could be their expense also. But I do have to say, I believe that we're doing a very good job with regard to how we do what we do. As you said, one of the things we do is not undressed police officers, plainclothes police officers.
You're not going to live that damn show.
No, never. We bring them into schools, they go into schools, and we test the securities in the schools, and we have police officers who do, as part of their normal patrol operations, stop by schools in certain districts. We do have an officer at the high school. I'm not saying that if you want to give us more officers, we'd be glad to take them. As Bob said, there's no police chief that would ever want less officers than more officers, but I think with what we have and how we do it today, we do a pretty good job. Can you always do a better job? Yes, you can, and there's a lot of different ways to do that.
All you can do is try to send a perception that, you know, that there is a presence. So it's important that we highlight that, what you just mentioned.
Absolutely.
That it's highlighted.
Absolutely.
So that no one gets any ideas, or that we can lower the chances of anyone getting any ideas of acting on that manner.
Without doubt.
So, yeah, I appreciate that answer, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
So, back to ordinances?
Back to ordinances?
You want me to go through the A, B, C, you know, A, B, C, or go to the one that?
Well, I think we, let's just go to B. I mean, for such a short agenda, this has had, we've had so many discussions and comments.
Did they prove the consent agenda, yes?
Yes.
We did.
Yes.
We did. So we're going to go to ordinances. This is ordinance B, that's in question.
Okay, ordinance twenty-five, thirty-eight, dash eighteen, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic, Subsection Seven, dash thirteen. Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Brook End Drive. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Councilwoman Castellina?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Koviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comments or questions on ordinance twenty-five, thirty-eight, dash eighteen? Yes, sir. And thank you for your patience, and thank you for respecting our protocol.
Good evening, Council President, members of the Township Committee and your staff. My name is Steve Sinisi, law firm, same name, practicing a two-seer's drive in Paramus, and I represent the property owner Alaris Health at West Orange, which is at the end of this particular street, as you may know. By law, it's got the status and is known as an inherently beneficial use, and therefore we submit an inherently beneficial citizen of this community. I ask for something a little unusual tonight. I'm not going to ask you to vote against this ordinance, and I'm not going to ask you to vote for it. I'm going to ask you to defer action tonight for one cycle. I'm here tonight with Christine Guiles, our administrator, and I'm here with a gentleman from Stonefield Engineering, Mr. Matt Steckler, who is our traffic and parking consultant. And we would like to share with you what we believe, without talking about ordinances, the presumption of validity, infirmities in ordinances, and when they're special or selective versus general, and for the benefit of the health, safety, and welfare. I'm here to talk to you tonight in the two or three minutes we'll take about the subject of less intrusive means to reach the same ends. And to that extent, because I know time is limited, I thought we may be even up against a shorter curfew in speaking. I do have a handout that we want to leave with you and ask that it be marked by the administrator as part of this record in public hearing. It's a page and a quarter. It basically concludes by saying what I opened with, which is, please let us ask you to defer action until, until we have an opportunity to present to you a more formal and more comprehensive report on why we do not believe this ordinance in its present form should, should be enacted, but rather to take into account a less intrusive means to get to the same place if we have diagnosed what the issues are correctly. May I? Do we have this officially marked, Council? And, Madam President, again, I promise to be brief, certainly a lot briefer than others. I'd like to call at this time Mr. Steckler to give a two-minute presentation. Is that all right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Matt Steckler, I'm with Stonefield Engineering, the address is ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. I work as a traffic and parking engineer throughout the state of New Jersey. I advise boards, both planning and zoning boards, I also work on private development applications typically related to parking and traffic. One of the things that we look at in terms of when we advise boards regarding on-street parking is there's really two different types of goals with restrictions. One would be a, I would typically say, a safety concern, which the goals would usually be a permanent restriction. This is usually related to if on-street parking is a sight distance concern, if it creates a too narrow of a roadway that prevents emergency vehicles to pass in through, if to prevent people from blocking driveways or hydrants. Those are typically the, I would say, complete, complete parking restriction throughout the entire day, throughout the entire week. Then there are typically parking ordinance that I would recommend that would look to promote turnover in spaces or protect spaces for certain users. This would be usually limited to certain time periods or certain times of day. Typically see that in retail corridors where you have a time period, or you may restrict employees from parking in certain areas so that certain spaces can turn over more frequently. Happens for street cleaning, it happens for police, they prefer to have no overnight parking, as you see in many townships like here, where you would have overnight parking so there's not streets, cars potentially being abandoned on streets. And those are more targeted enforcement or targeted ordinances. I don't personally know the Brook End Drive area that well, I'd like to perform a study to find out who is parking on these streets and what potential mechanisms we could perhaps engage the board in considering regarding the parking ordinance. Again, I'm not hearing here saying no ordinance should be granted, just that I'd like the opportunity to present a more selective parking restriction, perhaps if that would meet the ultimate goals that the, that the area is looking for here, that the council's looking for as well. So again, that's just my presentation, I know I have one second left, but I think that's what I would like to get across at this time period.
And it begs observation that there are, I think approximately four home, is that correct?
Between four.
Right.
On this area of Brook End Avenue, and we should also point out, and we'd be remiss, there is also a parking prohibition on one of the sides of that street. This is to make it all, and we think that could be a little bit more draconian, a little bit more intense than it has to be. We'd like an opportunity to show you with some empirical data our engineers will present as to why we think we can, we can present to you a less intrusive means to reach the same goal. And again, you've made value judgments in years past in your public records about, you know, the benefits of this facility and its location. We would like to make sure that as a significant community presence, that we just don't jump to a conclusion that, well, let's make it all go away, let's prohibit all on-street parking. We believe that we can give you within two weeks a report on your desk, I don't know when it is you meet again, maybe you could tell me?
March twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry?
March twenty-seventh.
Okay. Can we have something in by then? You know, if you would be willing to just extend us the courtesy as well, I think, the opportunity to benefit the community with some observations. We're paying for the traffic consultant, so it won't cost you anything other than to have your professionals review the report and comment accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sinisi, thank you very much. So this ordinance was introduced on first reading at our last council meeting, as presented to us by our town engineer, Lenny Lepore. And when it was introduced, I know I did make a comment at that time, that I drove down the street, there were cars parked along the Alaris, beautiful facility, along the Alaris street, side of the street, but I circled the parking lot to make sure that there was adequate parking, and yes, there were. There was adequate parking. So again, I think our engineer usually does a survey, and he probably has more insight to reasons why this is being presented to us.
I'm sure.
Lenny, do you want to?
In my, in my humble opinion, having drafted many ordinances in my forty-six-year career for several municipalities in Burden County, I would tell you that I don't see any prejudice in waiting a few weeks.
No, and I think that from?
Especially if we give you the benefit of a report that might be exactly what we think it will be, which is a means to a less intrusive end.
Well, I mean, I can speak, I think I can speak for my colleagues in this particular case, that we are good listeners, we do try to listen.
Thank you.
Unless, Lenny, you have some type of urgency?
I mean, I'm only going to suggest that you hear from Lenny, and I mean, and you certainly can postpone this for, till the next meeting or the meeting after that, you know, you can do what you want, but.
Well, Mr. Steckler just said that we have two weeks to, that you can submit something that's non-intrusive.
Yes, we will make sure that you will get a report from, Mr. Steckler's firm, that addresses our concerns and the overall goals and objectives of creating an ordinance that might try to accomplish what I think this is trying to do, but in a softer way.
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a lady who would like to speak also.
Okay, I do want, Len, did you want?
There's another resident here who would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll take it under consideration. This is unprecedented for us to, then.
Will there be a vote tonight? Or will we know before?
You'll know.
Before the end of the meeting?
Right, well, within the next few minutes or so.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Not sure which of these is working.
You're good, yep.
My name is Deanna Johnson, I'm a homeowner at ten Brook End Drive, I've lived there since nineteen eighty-four. I'd be interested in hearing what kind of less intrusive recommendations that you could come up with. Since at least two thousand and nine, I've documented complaints about people speeding on the street, and really personally, more important to me at this time, I not only live at ten Brook End Drive, but I operate a psychotherapy practice there. So I'm there twenty-four, seven. So I'm there 24/7. And cars, I have pictures, I don't think there's time to pass those around, but the parking is intrusive and it has been. Cars park with part of their car sticking into my driveway. I've been in touch with the chief of police, Chief Abbott. I don't want to have to call the police every time someone is encroaching on my space. I have a right to live in a place that's peaceful and to have my patients have adequate and safe access to enter my driveway and to exit. They don't have that now. One of my patients was sideswiped as she was trying to enter my driveway and is still suffering from injuries that she had a few months ago from that. I, what I want is safe passage on the street, getting to my home and away from it. I don't want cars parking so that I can't see when I'm leaving. I don't just work there. I'm talking about where I live. And so anything, the township has already taken incremental measures to address the problem, and it hasn't resolved the problem. And so the question about resident-only permit parking was one of the suggestions that we came up with, or no parking at any time. And I did a survey of the five, not four, but five homes on my street, and I'm not sure if Mr. Lepore also conducted a survey, but four out of the five homeowners would like to have no parking at any time. And I think as people who live there and have lived in the town for many years, I was there prior to the construction of Alaris and went through insane things like the food truck for the people who worked on the construction crew parking in my driveway. I've had it. One of my neighbors is planning to sell their home and move because of the condition. It's unacceptable.
Ms. Johnson, did you want to pass the pictures to the council?
Sure. And I'll also pass around a letter. One of my next-door neighbor was unable to attend the meeting that we had at Alaris to discuss our concerns, and so he gave me a letter to bring to that meeting, and I'd like to pass that around.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments on this issue? Len, can you give us insight?
Jack Sayers, the police chief, and I met with representatives of Alaris back in January. Three of the residents of the street, there are five different homes on the street, to go over some of these issues that they have. Clearly, a majority of the residents were present at that meeting who live on the street. What Ms. Johnson did is she went beyond that and contacted all of them because some of the suggestions that came up were a total prohibition on parking on both sides, not just the one side where it's prohibited now. There's also discussion about parking by residential permit only. And as Ms. Johnson stated to you tonight, she advised us that four of the five residents voted in favor of a total prohibition of parking, and based on her representation of the response of her neighbors, this ordinance was prepared and introduced two weeks ago. I think that there's nothing more obtrusive than residents not being able to park on their own street, and they were in favor of eliminating the parking in front of their homes. And based on that, we proceeded. I'm going to read something from the zoning board resolution of approval back in 1996 when Kessler Care was the applicant before the board. And what this states is, "The proposed facilities' rules and regulations will require that no resident nor their guests can park on Brookend Drive, and this will be made an affirmative representation as a condition of residency. The foregoing shall also apply to all employees at said facility." So I'm not sure if some of the solutions or a solution that would be proposed by Alaris is something to make it less obtrusive for the residents or less obtrusive for their residents or visitors or employees, but clearly, they're not supposed to be parking on Brookend Drive by their approval.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman?
Yeah, so Mr. Lepore questioned. So, so once this ordinance goes into effect, there won't be parking either side of the street for the residents at all on the street?
That's correct.
So, putting Alaris aside, and I know you did the survey, I mean, for resale value of the properties, I'm a little concerned if there isn't any parking. Again, I'd rather think of another solution because you go to sell your home and, you know, you would want parking in front of your home. So I know there's an issue with Alaris, but taking that aside from the residents, did you have a meeting with the residents before?
Yes.
I mean, are they fully?
Yeah, yes.
Fully aware of this, huh?
Yes.
Wow. That's concerning, so.
You have to come up to the microphone, yes, from?
I'm the administrator there with Alaris.
Can you state your name, please?
Christine Giles, and I'm also a resident of West Orange. I live on 3P Lot Place. Everyone's assuming it's employees. There's lots of visitors, there's lots of vendors, home care agencies stop by, and it could be a different person that comes. We have people that come to sell us things. So it's not, like, everyone is assuming it's our employees. We have, I have Seton Hall nursing students come two days a week, and I've told them, but it's like different students. So it's, you know, it's, we tried to tell our employees not to park there, but there's so many variables that come to the facility. I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. I think that was the point I was trying to make, was that parking is available in the back and that-
Yeah.
That there is plenty of parking in the lot itself.
I'll disagree with you on that because I've been over there quite a bit, and sometimes there is no parking in the back parking lot. And I just always assumed people were parking further up to be closer to the building because as you know, if you've parked in the back, you've got to come across the bridge and walk up aways. But I've been back there where it looks like a lot of parking, but where I literally couldn't find a parking space.
Wow.
Question from Mr. Lepore. So in this meeting you have with the residents, I mean, doesn't anybody have, like, company or a party at their house? I mean, where would folks park?
Well, I think most of them felt that they had enough room in their driveways to accommodate that. Now, there is one resident who's not here tonight, and he's the one of the five who wasn't in favor of this. He would have liked on-street parking by permit because his driveway isn't as big as some of his neighbors. But I, you know, there isn't a lot of parking that is available on the street. Between the fact that the street's not long, between the number of driveways, you know, it's not as if dozens of cars are going to be able to park, whether they would serve residents, guests, employees of Alaris Health or guests of residents, there is not a lot of on-street parking. And I think that probably influenced most of the people who said yes to no parking any time, is it wasn't making a big difference for them with the size of their driveways.
Have we tried ticketing, like, someone, not that somebody has to call to ticket, but just patrolling by and just taking tickets on the windows constantly? So you get your ticket yet? That hasn't helped?
We have done enforcement there, and as you just heard from the director, there's just people that come there and they park. They park all over the place, and they block people's driveways, unfortunately. There's times where we went up there where cars had been blocking this lady's driveway and other people's driveways. We had a meeting, Lenny, myself, and the police chief. We had a meeting with the people in the neighborhood as well as the people from Alaris. We threw out some different ideas, and at the end of that meeting, the issue was that they wanted no parking, and that's what we felt we had to do. And that's why we're here tonight. But as Lenny said, if you look at the resolution from the board, and I didn't know that even the day of the meeting, the bottom line is you're not allowed to park on the street anyway, based on what the board approved.
But I would like to see-
But the residents are allowed to park on the street.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Whoever owns that building, according to that resolution, are not allowed to park cars on that street.
So why wouldn't we try residential permit parking for now?
Because the neighbors don't want it. There's five neighbors. Four of them want no parking.
For themselves, for their own parking spot.
One wants permit parking. The other four do not want any parking. The neighbors don't want it. I mean, I don't know what else we have to say, but the decision's up to you guys.
I just want to read, I just want to read over here.
Time out.
Yep.
Time out.
I think we're, I think so the request is being made, are we willing to defer this vote until March 27? Taking into consideration that Mr. Sneece said he's going to come up with a less intrusive plan, and I want to respect Mrs. Johnson's comments and the other residents that are voting for-
And we'll make a copy of whatever we give to you. I will get her's address, and I'll make sure she has it in line for the meeting.
Yes, sir. We, I know, we don't have a, it's difficult to talk back and forth.
I guess the real question is how do you get around the resolution? I mean, you know-
The resolution is that they can't park there. That they can't park there, right.
But they're doing it anyway.
But they're doing it anyway, right. So are you taking that into, is Mr. Steckler, if he's still here, taking that into consideration, that condition on the zoning board?
I didn't figure it out.
I was asking the gentleman from the traffic firm.
Mr. Steckler.
Mr. Steckler said that he was going to come up with a less intrusive plan by March 27, and I wanted to know that he was taking into consideration the 1996 zoning board condition that employees or visitors are not allowed to park at Alaris. I wanted to make sure he was making a note of that.
Duly noted.
Duly noted. Thank you. So I'm going to present to my colleagues, can make a motion to defer the vote until March 27 to hear an alternative plan.
And I would just like to add, the council meeting is probably the least appropriate or efficient way of trying to deal with this, so I would strongly urge Alaris and its representatives to deal with the administration and with Mr. Lepore before the council meeting.
We've already done that, Council President.
Okay. Well, we don't know what they're going to come back with. That's the point I'm making.
This is the first we've heard of this. We had meeting with Alaris, with the residents. We came up with the solution. We put it on the agenda. You guys voted on it last two weeks ago. No one came in to discuss it. Now here we are on second reading, and everybody wants to change the rule. I don't know what the reasoning is or why that happened, but we did our part. I want the public to know that. We met with them and we met with the public.
I understand.
And we did what we had to do.
Well, I certainly didn't mean anything that I said to cast any aspersion on your efforts. What I was saying was that it, to me, it looks like Alaris has reached a different perspective on, they think that we're going to do this and they want to try to work some sort of compromise or solution that benefits their needs. And it's a, as there was some reference earlier, this is a good neighbor, a good commercial operation here in West Orange that does a lot of good, and I would be very much in favor of trying to reach some compromise that works for the residents and for Alaris. And if it's taken the second reading for Alaris to come to the table and try something different, I'm all in favor of waiting a few more weeks to do this. And I really appreciate the resident who came and really put this into perspective because, like I said, I've been over there too when there's just been wall-to-wall cars, not even parking on the street, just parking, you know, on land. And it's just, it seems ridiculous to me, but when you go back there and look at the parking lot, it's really hemmed in. And I don't know whether that would be a solution, is to increase the parking back there, but I don't know what Alaris is going to come back with, but I would certainly like to give them the benefit, at least for a couple of more weeks, but not much longer than that.
That's obviously your decision to make.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to defer this vote on second reading until our March 27.
Can I just ask a parliamentary question, Mr. Kizer? Because this being an ordinance, we have a process that we're supposed to follow, and we're supposed to, on second reading, either vote it down or vote it up. We're not-
But you can continue the, you can continue it.
You can continue, okay.
Like any other thing you do, so it's not a problem.
Okay.
I do think, though, I mean, just from my own perspective, I was not aware of the zoning board resolution, and that's something that's got to be addressed, and I don't know how they address it, but, I mean-
Well, at this point, ticketing.
Well.
Well, you have to establish the ordinance to do that.
Right, but this ordinance is prohibiting parking on both, prohibit it.
Other way, it's a zoning violation, which is different than a traffic violation.
So I made a motion to defer the vote.
I'll second. I also like the residents to really think about, you know, resale value of your property. Yeah, I know.
All right, I need to take the roll call. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes. Yes, to defer.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kokovia?
Yes.
Council President McCorkin?
Yes. Say, your deadline is March 27?
Understood.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I marked the letter of March 13, 2018, from Stonefield Engineering, Exhibit 1, put today's date, put the ordinance number on. I'm going to give it to the clerk to keep as a matter of record.
Do you want to continue with the resolution that was told, or do you want to continue with the ordinance?
Let's go back to the regular agenda.
Okay. So Resolution 86-18 was pulled, resolution authorizing the township to execute a service agreement with goose control technology, farm services related to population control of Canadian geese at all township parks and properties for the year 2018. Councilman Kokovia?
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this because those of you who have been watching council meetings for years know that I am opposed to spending the $2,500 or the $3,000 to do this when I know that there are residents here who would be happy to do this themselves. And I thought we could, it's also a process that's been used in municipalities elsewhere in Essex County, and I just wanted to pull it because I didn't want to vote in favor of it. But again, I would be happy to, if my colleagues were open to this alternative, I'm sure that we could get people here, West Orange residents and elsewhere, who want to do the exact same thing, and we wouldn't have to put out the $2,500 to do this.
Councilman, I'm going to just, I am going to respectfully disagree. I think this program has been very successful for- says program has been very successful for, I don't know even when this was implemented, and we've had this discussion for many years. I think it would, I, I would imagine that even if it's a volunteer organization, they were going to have to be supervised or something between the Health Department or Public Works, and there would still be an expense incurred by that. It, I can't see that it would be a totally volunteer operation. And we have not had one person complain since this has been implemented. We have 17 bodies of water in town. I think it's actually money's well spent.
Council President, I think it's also important to note that part of this contract is $500 for the, the vendor to actually work with volunteers on a year-in, year-out basis. And we've not had, been able to utilize that service over the past four or five years, at least, since there have not been any volunteers to do it. So, I would suggest if there are volunteers out there, that, you know, an effort be made to, to bring them in, and we, this part of this contract will be to train them and to, to go through the process of, of that, you know, the vendor, to work with them, to get them going, if, if indeed those volunteers exist, so.
So, is there a way to post that, to let people know, this is just like any other ordinance, we pass ordinance, pass resolutions, and then how do people know about it? Is there a way to get the volunteers involved with this, if you're saying that this is part of the contract? Is there a way that the township can post, post that information?
True. And, and just to clarify, we have had volunteers who did this. I was one of them. And we had, at, the last time we did this, we probably had seven or eight on a regular basis, who would come and just basically watch this guy do, this guy from Goose Technology at the three sites here in town. And that's what we basically did, is watched. And we also looked for, for nests. And ironically, ironically, we actually went out and addled some eggs at Alaris. They had a, they had some geese there that were nesting, and we got a call, not we, but one of the other volunteers, and we went out there and addled the eggs in it. So, there are, there are volunteers who, who would do this, but they, when we had the volunteers, we basically watched the Goose Technology guy do everything, and it just was basically a waste of time. But if you want, I, I could be happy to make a couple of phone calls, and I'm sure that we could get eight or 10 volunteers, if, if they knew that they were actually going to be doing something with their time, rather than standing there and watching.
We'll coordinate that.
Contact, contact the Health Department, and I'm sure they'll coordinate that.
So, that's still part of the program, right?
This is part, that's part of this contract.
I, I, I commend you for, for your efforts, and for volunteering for that, that chore. And I would hope there's some methodology with what the company is doing, because I, I know the high school, the other areas, the rec programs where all the kids participate in, I mean, it's an issue if it's not done properly, and, and on the, making a total mess of the field. So, I, I commend you, but I, I don't know, I think maybe just, it's not, you know, the expense, I would, I'd rather see the professionals handle it. Sometimes we, the volunteers don't come out, and you would hope they would get all the eggs, too. So, I mean, you follow him around, but does he point you in the right direction, or?
Well, there are certain things that, that, that the Goose Technology guy does that, that he won't allow the volunteers
Yeah.
to deal with. So, basically, we go and watch him, and we look for extra nests. And just to clarify what you were saying about making mess of fields, there, there's no question that the geese do that. We're talking, however, about two separate things. We're talking about resident geese, geese that are there and stay there for
Yeah.
the entire year round. And, but what you and others often talk about, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, is when the geese are migrating.
Yes.
And they'll stop there for a limited period of time and mess up the field. I mean, Stag Field is one of their favorite places to, to go.
Yes.
But those are, those are different. That doesn't, that, that's not what this program addresses. This program addresses the resident geese who stay there and, on a permanent basis.
After they migrate there, yeah.
Yeah. And they, they don't go anywhere. They just, they just stay there, so.
Okay.
And, and just to be, to be clear, because I wasn't sure that I was, $500 is within this contract, if we don't have volunteers, it's not, it is not billed for and not spent.
Okay.
So, we, we, it is in there, in, in the event that we have volunteers, in order to get them involved. And it, to the extent that, as Mr. Kocovia said, if, you know, what they're extended, of their, of, of the volunteerism and what they're expected to do, I don't know, but I suspect we could have that conversation with the vendor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Giles.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt 86-18?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Going back to ordinances on second and final reading.
Oh, no, we have this here, Ordinance 87-18. Len, this, there was a question here, too, and this is the Degnan Park in Lafayette, with Matrix doing the remediation testing on the two parks, but this was a requirement with the Greenacre funding. I think I just answered the question?
Yes, you did.
Yes, that's true. We received a grant and, and funding in, in the form of a loan from the Greenacres program, and part of the requirements of our grant contract and loan contract is to have a preliminary assessment performed. We had the preliminary assessment. As is true with most preliminary assessments, there are areas of concern that are identified. There are certain protocols that they follow as established by the NJDEP. Just because something may be an area of concern, doesn't necessarily mean it warrants further investigation.
Right.
But in, in this particular case, for both facilities, there is areas where further investigation is needed. At Lafayette Park, there were nine areas of concern. Only two of those do they recommend any further investigation. And at Degnan Park, there were 16 areas of concern, and they're looking to further investigate five of those.
Okay.
This is very similar to any other funding that we've had from Greenacres. I was a little surprised it came up with something that's been a park facility, probably Lafayette for probably the better part of 80 to 90 years.
Mm-hmm.
And Degnan, easily 60 years. When we make acquisitions, we've had to go through this process. I, I can understand the reasoning behind that. I was a little bit surprised here.
Right.
But I think, given their concerns, this is something we should follow through with, not just because it's a grant, but because it's, it's used by the public.
It's a requirement.
Yeah.
So, I was just a little bit concerned, because I, if, if I remember correctly, and I don't have it in, the materials in front of me, I think we're appropriating $31,000, roughly $31,000 to do the studies on the two properties.
Correct.
And that's even before there was any potential remediation, if they find something there.
Yes.
So, and that could be more money. I, I'm just curious, what would happen if, at what point will we use up all the money remediating the property and not have the money to actually put in the facilities and rehabilitate the facilities? That was the original intent of the-
Well, I, I'm not sure if, if, when we put our estimate for the funding together, certainly this wasn't
Right.
considered as, as part of it. I, I think you're right, we're, we're approaching probably close to what the grant amount is without, and that's assuming that there's nothing further that needs to be done. This is a requirement of funding. If I think we get to a point where we may say it's not worth it, we don't have to proceed with, with the grant, and we can just proceed with the projects on our own. But I think there's probably still going to be, once, once these issues are raised, I, I think we're going to probably need to address them or want to address them, regardless of what the source of the money is.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Len?
Oh, yeah, don't- This is in the brownfields, is it?
No.
No.
Don't go far. It's on the last one.
Oh, I, I wasn't.
Okay.
May I move on to ordinances? 2537-18, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-20, Stop Intersections of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township, Overlook Avenue and Lawrence Avenue. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comment or question on overlook stop? Anyone here? Comment? Seeing none?
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt 2537-18?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2539-18, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.1, Handicap Parking on the Streets of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange, Pleasant Valley Way. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. And can you explain the, the number change? Was there a, a number change on that actual?
It's in front of 525, Pleasant Valley Way, which is the cerebral palsy of North Jersey facility. In this ordinance, this particular section, a street number isn't needed. It was put in wrong, and it was not needed, so the street number's been removed from the ordinance.
Councilwoman, did you have a question on this ordinance?
Yes, so my concern, Mr. Lepore, was that it's, it's close proximity to the driveway at Kelly Elementary School. So, I didn't know if there should be a time restriction on the parking, that maybe it shouldn't be there during school, school hours. I mean, well, school drop-off and pickup.
First, parking is allowed there now.
There is.
Without, without restriction, except for the overnight hours. Also, there is another driveway. The driveway of this facility is located between this proposed parking stall and the school driveway. So, it's, it's not immediately adjacent to the driveway. I think there's, there's plenty of room in between where this stall is located and, and the driveway.
I guess I was worried about visual with the big van, someone trying to pull out and-
I, I, I think there's sufficient room there. Yeah. And this isn't necessarily something that is occupied a lot of the time, either.
No, so I was wondering about the restriction.
And unfortunately, I think it was probably problems during school hours which precipitated, I think this, the initial request was that there was a, a line of cars in, in front of the facility, which was hampering their use of, of their own facility. Perfectly legal, but
Yeah.
a problem for them.
And you don't see an issue with, a visual issue?
Uh, no, no, I don't.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Nope.
No, Mr. Lepore and I have discussed the safety issue, and he's assured me that it's a safe.
Right. Madam Clerk, public comment? Any other comments on this ordinance, handicap parking space at Pleasant Valley Way? Seeing none?
Okay, is there a motion to adopt on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. There are no ordinances on first reading this evening. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Just looking forward to Saturday.
There you go.
Yep.
Okay, so make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
This evening's meeting, and hope to see everyone at the parade on Sunday, March 18th. Step off 12:15.
All in favor to adjourn?
All in favor to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.